Hi Mike.
Hi there, how are you?
Good and you?
Good.
Hi everyone.
Hi John.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. So I have the meeting set up so that Mike can share his screen.
Great, perfect. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I see we're recording, good that we're in good shape that way. Mike, how you doing?
I'm Will, how are you?
Good, thanks for joining us this afternoon.
Happy to, as always.
Small logistic upfront, I believe Mac ultimately needed to decline, so I am hopeful that Mary-Kate Murin, our board chair, can join us, so therefore we have, if you will, the one trustee that allows us to be official and on the record that way.
Yes, Mike.
Mike, is this our first via Zoom meeting, is that correct for our investment subcommittee?
Um, I honestly can't remember, I think it's the second. I think we did this for the first quarter as well, which probably would have been in beginning of May.
Gosh, that's how time is just blurring right now. Madam Board Chair, thanks for joining us.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, Mary-Kate.
Hey, Nanette, thank you so much for helping me out, I appreciate you.
Oh, you're welcome, anytime.
Operator error.
I think this is us, Mary-Kate, because you are our single trustee, you therefore allow us to go into open meeting, as we know Mac had to decline, so he will not be able to join us tonight.
Yep.
So if you can sort of just call the meeting to order, then I think Mike can proceed and be official and on the record, if you will.
Great, so I call to order the STCC Investments Committee meeting Thursday, August 6, 2020.
Great. Mike, again, thanks for joining us, I was saying, Mary-Kate, I wasn't sure if we met via Zoom last time around. Again, for all of us here, we are, Tony, thanks for joining us, we are in accordance with open meeting law, we are live streaming through our YouTube channel, that allows the public to see and observe. It looks like we've got, Mike, your presentation queued up. I have a couple sort of questions at the end. As you know, Mike, it's going to be an incredible year for us and every probably higher education institution, would love to hear a bit of your sort of macro context on all that, and to talk about reserves, right, and the possibility down the road of a reserve request need, all that, so just wanted to be sure of that. I think you may also know, John Tudgen is now serving as our interim CFO. So again, we can certainly talk offline about interface with the college going forward, but I'll turn it over to you, Mike, thank you.
Okay, so we can address all those, Dr. Cook, which was great, we'll go through the market update and portfolio update quickly. You know, in terms of, I guess maybe your broader point, right, this is a conversation we're having with every single higher education client, conversations about what they're doing for fall semester, reserves, taking a larger draw, taking a special appropriation, not taking one, you know, certainly a lot of things up in the air. And I think just important to note, as you think through this portfolio, right, with really the exception of one strategy, which is quarterly liquid, everything is daily liquid. You know, a number of the investments from the really difficult market environment we experienced with the first quarter, the markets, I think as everyone's well aware, have come storming back and then some. You know, our nervousness is maybe a little bit too far ahead of their skis from where they should be, given the level of uncertainty that's out there, but we'll touch on all that and dig into this in any context I can offer about, you know, thinking through the impacts to the college for fall semester, spring semester, etc., I'm happy to do so. We'll jump right into it, one interesting thing, and I know this blast email went out, I think we're probably going to do it again next year, and we'll make sure this was a last minute thing, we'll be a little bit more proactive about it, but this was really kind of led by our group in Chicago that we're now merged with, but we actually did put together a last minute internship program for folks, you know, a lot of kids obviously lost that opportunity, rising juniors, rising seniors, to participate in more formal internship programs, so we put this together, and it was more of a kind of a coursework scenario, but had about 120 people participate from about 50 different colleges, with a really diverse background of students, so we were pretty excited about it, it was a modular program to look at all aspects of the business, and we're just wrapping it up, and I think it's something that we had so much success, right, it's like, you know, the typical internship program is we probably bring on four or five students, and if we can do it for 100+ every year, why not do something like that, so hopefully we'll get more involved with this, and we'll make sure we communicate it with not only you, but all the schools here in the East Coast going forward.
Appreciate that.
From a governance perspective, this quarter is very investment heavy, would probably make sense, given the environment that we're in, we'll dig into a little bit of attribution and dig into asset class review. One of the things we want to touch on, and we've talked on in those meetings a number of times, is just how to build a diversified portfolio, what that means, particularly on the equity side, so we've always been proponents, we've talked to the committee about being globally diversified, and over the last 10 years, that has been an unpopular decision, not just for us, but for most long-term investors, right, you're not going to have all your chips in one basket, so you're not going to invest only in US markets, although as you can see from this chart below, for really the last 10 years, US markets have outperformed their foreign counterparts, you know, pretty noticeably. I think something to discern from this page also is that regional outperformance is not uncommon, and it's also not uncommon for it to ebb and flow, so for the decade before the financial crisis, international markets were really what drove return, and you can see vice versa, so while 10 years feels like a long time for a long-term pool of capital, it really isn't, and we want to make sure that we're being prepared for all these different types of markets, so continue to feel strongly about that. A couple, I think, interesting points, right, and it's easy to lose focus on this, being a US citizen, hearing about the S&amp;P on the news every night, CNBC, whatever you call it, but, you know, the US is becoming a less and less important part of the global economic footprint, so certainly from a population standpoint, but from GDP, it's down to 24%, that number keeps coming down, listed securities only about 27% are domiciled here in the US, and from a market cap perspective, it's still north of 50%, but this is down considerably even in the last, you know, decade, 20 years, so, you know, we've always been proponents of saying, let's open up the broader opportunity set, and I think this chart is particularly telling. It caught me off guard to see how dramatic this was, but, so even in the last decade, when US markets or indices have outperformed foreign industries dramatically, if you take the top 50 stocks globally, you could see on average 75% of them, year over year, even when the US markets outperform, are domiciled overseas, so, you know, here, you can buy the S&amp;P 500, or the Russell 3000, and basically buy every investable stock in the universe, that is not the case overseas, and a lot of times, it's companies that don't fall in those indices, that are some of the best performers, and one of the reasons we use active management to go out and be able to find those opportunities, because there's very strong performing companies that aren't domiciled here in the US, and it doesn't really matter what the indices are doing. Another important point of that is that a lot of this is the result of the strength of the US dollar, so a lot of that's been driven by our relative economic strength here over the last decade, our higher interest rates have meant the dollar has appreciated against most global currencies, that tends, that is a headwind for international markets, if you're investing in them with US dollars, if you think about it, if you took $100,000, bought into international markets 10 years ago, and then the dollar appreciated 30%, you decided to sell those securities and bring those dollars back, that money is worth essentially 30% less than it was when you moved it over there, so that accounts for a huge chunk of that relative underperformance, so when the dollar is strong, tends to be a headwind for international markets, if you're a US dollar-based investor, and when the dollar weakens, it tends to be the opposite, and we've actually experienced that a little bit here, or since March, as the dollar has weakened from a very strong footprint. You can see how strong the dollar has gotten, so it's not uncommon for it to go through periods where it strengthens dramatically, it's also not uncommon for it to go through periods similar to all things in the market, right, and another chart I showed you, that it weakens dramatically, and where we sit today, it's more than one standard deviation above its long-term averages from a purchasing power parity standpoint. So those are two things we've typically looked at, we've been digging into this a little bit more, and it's actually fairly eye-opening, but this is actually, you know, this US versus international is more of what sectors have performed well, and what sectors make up the biggest chunks of the various indices, more so than, you know, Europe, the economy there is never going to recover, or Japan has lost its way, or some of the negative press coming out of China, you can see here, the MSL all-country world, which is essentially every foreign market, both developed and emerging, see, a good chunk of that is made up by financials, industrials, consumer discretionary, so some of the more value-oriented sectors, whereas the US has become really a growth driver, the majority of the US indices are in the growth markets, you can see information technology is now over 20%, 25% of the entire S&amp;P 500, healthcare and consumer discretionary, you stack those three sectors on top of it each other, that's more than 50% of the entire market cap, so when growth does well, which it has for the last decade, US markets are going to look better, and there's actually more of a correlation to what sector leadership has been to drive those markets than any economic dispersion, really. Just to give you a sense, financials cumulatively since 2007 have only returned 4%, where in that same period, tech is up 415%, and really, it's a handful of companies, so this is a, this chart is pretty dramatic.
So we've all heard about the finance stuff. Just real quick, that IT, that's, I forget the acronym, but the Apple, Facebook, like that, that would find itself in that IT.
Yeah, so there's other companies in the tech sector besides those big ones, but those are the majority of it.
Yeah.
Actually, this chart talks to that, so this blue line is those stocks, so Facebook, Apple, Google, Amazon, Netflix, Microsoft, they now account for about 30% of the S&amp;P 500, those six companies, it's as narrow as it's ever been, even more narrow than when we were in the tech bubble, and you can see, actually, if you took those five stocks and you bought them in 2015, that's your return, just for those six companies. The red line is actually the rest of the S&amp;P, if you subtract out those companies, essentially flat, a modest return, and actually, international markets have outperformed US markets with the exception of these six stocks, so it's pretty dramatic how much of a driver they've become, and they've certainly had their day in the sun, maybe deservedly so, they've held up very well through this crisis that we've been in for a whole host of reasons, but it's pretty uncommon to see markets driven by only a half a dozen companies, and when you see, you know, the S&amp;P is annualized at these returns, when you actually dig into it, right, it's basically this half dozen companies versus everyone else, and everyone else has not had a great, you know, half a decade, so I think pretty dramatic to see that charted out, and how much of a driver those have been. And then lastly, from a valuation standpoint, always look at valuations, they tend to be good long-term predictors, poor short-term predictors, but US companies are, you know, notably overvalued relative to their international peers, again, more than one standard deviation, so we're not sure when this trend's going to flip, but we've seen time and time again that currency strength, sector leadership, regional leadership is a cyclical factor, and at some point, we want to make sure that we own the other side of this trade, and kind of not chase the six tech stocks that have really worked well, that have really driven market returns for the last, you know, 10 years. That's not to say that we don't own them, right, we're diversified, we've had exposure to them, we benefited from them, but it is not how the portfolio is biased, just for that one outcome. Any questions on the international discussion? Okay, one quick update, maybe this is more for John, but as he's well aware, so Wells Fargo, who is your primary custodian, is in the process of merging with Principal, we've been keeping a close eye on it, we continue to be comfortable with it, it really looks like the Wells Fargo teams and systems that we've become accustomed to and like are going to be what is retained as part of this merger, so we'll keep a close eye on that, but everything moving along smoothly with that, and no recommendation to kind of evaluate a new custodial relationship at this time. You know, digging into the markets, right, so reversed back to March 31st, things were pretty bleak, you know, both from a capital market standpoint, an economic standpoint, and certainly a socio-economic and healthcare standpoint, a number of different market outcomes, right, in beginning of April, we started to see some indication that the spread of the virus was slowing, talks of various vaccine, and of the economic data coming in where we expected it to be, and as a result of that, the markets really took off, you know, they tend to foreshadow economic events, you know, three to six months ahead of the point, so it's, they're really pricing in a recovery through the back half of this year and beginning of next year, and I'll show you some of that data. Certainly a lot of uncertainty around that, more concerns over COVID scenarios, a resurgence, how we're dealing with its economic impact going into an election year, but, you know, so a market is really, in our estimation, pricing in that, you know, things are going to play out as economists are expecting it to, but there's a lot of potential speed bumps right along the way that we want to be careful of. You can see here the returns, fixed income returns were strong, so as we touched on in the last quarter, you really only wanted to own treasury securities in that flight to safety, a lot of other fixed income sectors sold off dramatically alongside the equity markets, it was a very difficult technical environment for fixed income, a lot of assets almost went liquid for a period of time, we saw things normalize here in the quarter, and you can see things like credit, corporate high yield, EM debt, some of those spread sectors really rebounded nicely, and we'll see the portfolio bounce back as a result of that, we also took advantage of this situation with a tactical trade, which I'll explain when we get to the portfolio as well. S&amp;P 500 up 20% for the quarter, year-to-date, only down 3% through March, it's now positive. You can see the NASDAQ, so the growth has the index rate up 31% for the quarter, up 13% year-to-date, 27% in a one-year, again, driven really by those six companies, and then you look at the difference between the growth and value side, for the quarter, about 1,300 basis points differential, and you can see year-to-date, growth stocks up 10%, value stocks down 16%, so just a huge dispersion between the two, we've touched on having a modest value bias in the portfolio, because of, even before the COVID crisis, we thought the growth sector was kind of overvalued and not sustainable, so that value bias has had a bit of a headwind for the portfolio, it's not a dramatic bias, but it's one that we feel even more strongly about today, you know, kind of foreshadowing that some of the charts I just showed you, we'll dig into that a little bit, international markets rebounded as well, you can see EFA, so developed markets, and then emerging, up 15 and 18%, respectively, so very strong capital market returns, from an economic standpoint, you know, here's what I was telling you, what the market's really pricing in, real GDP growth, they expect to be negative really across the board, with the exception of China this year, but positive in 2021, so kind of improving through fourth quarter, and then really accelerating through next year, we'll kind of wait to see if that happens, but markets pricing that in. We have started to see a little bit of a recovery, so PMI data is kind of an indication of industrial production, if it's 50 or positive, it means it's expanding, if it's below 50, it's contracting, you can see everything dropped off very dramatically in the first quarters, you might imagine, but has recovered, it's still in contracting territory, but much closer to that break-even line, which is good to see. From an equity evaluation perspective, here's a contribution to the return, so when you see growth run, here's the growth sectors, again, IT, 26% of the index contributing, close to a third of the S&amp;P's entire return, add in consumer discretionary, healthcare, and communication, which holds what were tech companies, you know, Netflix and Google are now in this tech sector, so essentially kind of stack that on top of IT, and, you know, again, the big drivers there, whereas the value sectors, utilities, materials, staples, energy, financials, really not contributing much. Valuations on a Cape ratio were really in the US, back to where we started in 2019, I think, which is pretty eye-opening, given what we just went through in the volatility, but prices are close to, you know, back to where they were, if not more, and obviously, earnings are likely down a little bit, which are having an impact on that as well, so valuations on the equity side here in the US continue to look rich, and maybe fairly valued, or even a little bit overvalued overseas, but relative basis, much more attractive. You know, fixed income, and this is where we'll dig in on the portfolio, 10-year treasury at June was yielding 65 basis points, I don't know where it closed at today, but at one point this week, it was back to 50 basis points. Typically, if you take that 10-year treasury yield and look forward 10 years, that's the return you'd expect to get from your core fixed income portfolio, so 50 basis points nominal for a decade is not overly exciting, it's actually darn right scary, so fixed income, I would argue, is actually more overvalued right now than equities are, and if you adjust that for inflation, that's a negative real return, so eating into your purchasing power, so really a tough environment for endowments or long-term pools of capital, thinking about how you need to allocate to be able to stomach some volatility, but also not locking in those very meager returns, so we touched on it last quarter, we've touched on it a number of times, the fixed income allocation that we've built for you was biased towards spread sectors, to try to get a little bit of incremental yield to offset the low interest rate environment, and doing so in a thoughtful way, so that hurt in the first quarter, but was a very strong positive here in the second quarter, as I mentioned, those spread sectors came bouncing back pretty dramatically, and you could see their excess return over treasuries, and this chart here really explains it, so here's what spreads did, so really, the risk premium over treasuries, you can see they moved out dramatically in the first quarter, we took advantage of this, so this tends to be a pretty nice environment to add in credit risk, you know, technical environment, it was pricing in default rates that we've never ever seen on a historical basis, and really, if we experience those types of default rates, we'd have a lot bigger issues to worry about, so probably an overexaggeration from the markets, we actually implemented a dedicated high-yield position when spreads were about 850 basis points, to date, they've actually come down below their 10-year average, they're about 475 basis points, I think, this morning, so we actually are in the process of selling that high-yield position, locking in that spread compression, which accounted for about 900 basis points of return on that strategy, locking that in on a tactical trade, and then re-diversifying it, now that they're not nearly as attractive to take that risk as they were, call it, two months ago, so we're glad to see that, and it worked in our favor, and just an example of some of the things that we're always trying to do in the portfolio thoughtfully, and those modest tactical shifts. And then the last thing I'd focus you on, here's our viewpoints, these have not changed since last quarter, continue to be neutral from a fixed income equity or strategic allocation standpoint, given the amount of uncertainty out there, we've continued to have this modest value bias, which again, has been a headwind of the portfolio, has not worked thus far, but we're not ready to give up on it yet, for everything I just talked about, thinking into the future, and then that slight bias toward credit in the fixed income portfolio, which is, this quarter has been a positive as well. So I know that was a lot, a lot of investment-heavy stuff from the capital markets and the governance calendar this quarter, but I'll pause there and see if there's any other questions before we dig into the portfolio.
More just a curiosity, Mike, you know, we, when I started, you know, I asked about socially responsible investing, and we sort of took a small position on that, you know, I'm one who never wants to overly simplify, right, there's a lot of detail that goes in here into strategic positioning, but from 2015 to today, when you show six tech companies and the amount of return, and just how large and looming they are in a particular segment that seems to be growing, part of me wonders, should we not consider, entertain, at least start to talk about what, some kind of modest and yet dedicated position to those six tech companies, again, I don't know, I don't want to seem to be rash, but there seems to be a lot there, even though that is such a, what, risk-reward type of a view, as opposed to the way we sort of hedge around lots of these other positions.
You know, it's hard to say, right, I don't know that Amazon is going to be pets.com and not exist, you know, tomorrow, that said, you know, I think they can be around and be a very sustainable business, and one that we've become accustomed to for a long, long time, but is it maybe valued more than what it's actually worth, given what some of those expectations are, maybe, you know, things like Netflix, you know, has kind of really grown, potentially, that's a technology, right, where there's already a lot more competition today with Disney Plus, or what's coming out from NBC, or Hulu, or you name it, there's a lot more competition there, they're not going to get the same type of, kind of media to put on that platform from their competitors anymore, so potentially Netflix is one, I'm not calling this, right, but that's one that you could see, you know, technology or others replace them, and they lose their market share, so, you know, I think what we're always trying to do, and what the active managers in the portfolio are trying to do, is find out who is next, you know, they have exposure to those companies, the S&amp;P is by far largest position in this portfolio, and if 25% of it's already in those companies, we already have very meaningful positions in those, so, you know, in terms of, do we want to just kind of throw the money, or take a position in those two companies, it could be a great decision, Dr. Cook, it could be a terrible position, and that's one of the reasons why, if an active manager who's going to do the work on those portfolios and put more thought into it than we're going to have on this call, and they feel very comfortable with owning Amazon or an overweight, then we're very comfortable with that, but in terms of trying to kind of outsmart the market or time, you know, let's try to be tactical around when's a great time to take advantage of a rally from a handful of companies, that's one that we try to avoid it, generally speaking.
And even I'll say, you know, with Tony, Mary-Kate, John Tudgen, Dorothy, our interim controller, even just that, Mike, helps, the idea that S&amp;P is our largest position, if you will, across our investments, and 25% of that is in the, that helps clarify our position already, if you will, on these signature and significant companies, so that's helpful.
Yeah, and I'd say one other way to think about it, too, which is, you know, thoughtful, and you haven't really had to do this, right, it's really become the default in the last five years, right, for the S&amp;P or index exposure to be the base It's really become the default in the last five years, right, for the S and P or index exposure to be the base case, right? Almost to be like the fiduciary. But I think it's important that like owning passive exposure is not a passive decision, it's an active decision. And you need to know what it's constituted of, so you know, just because the market cap weighted index has become kind of a base case and a popular way to invest, it is not necessarily become the way that a fiduciary or what you might want the college or others to invest their endowment in, like if you just owned eighty percent in the S and P five hundred and twenty percent in the Barclays Ag and didn't have a thoughtful rationale for that, you and not paying attention to it, you might have a five percent of the of the school's entire endowment, right, in Amazon. Which, you know, it might be an unintended debt and one that's not really thought about, so it's kind of defaulted to just be like, oh, in the market cap index and you're fine, but it's gotten to a point now where it's so undiversified and so focused with those companies that you really need to think through, like what am I actually owning and am I comfortable with that? It's not a right or wrong answer, but at least thinking through it.
That's really helpful, yeah, appreciate that.
Okay, digging into the portfolio, so ended June, as we would imagine, right, portfolios were up across the board, the long term pool, so the more endowment focus up to just shy of eleven million. And the short term pool, which, you know, is much more conservative by design, held in there a lot better, obviously through the downturn at about five million, so about just a shy of sixteen million total in assets. So kind of making up a lot of what we lost in the first quarter. Here you can see the asset allocation, you can see that high yield strategy here, the PIMCO high yield. A little bit underweight fixed income as equity markets have come bouncing back, so if you remember, we rebalanced from fixed income back to equity at the tail end of the first quarter. To take advantage of that dislocation. And with that run, we actually, you know, equity markets are now overweight relative to fixed income, so alongside this PIMCO underweight, we're actually going to take some chips off the table on the equity side and move them back to the fixed income side, so to stay true to those longer term targets. Which over time, we think we beneficial, but everything, you know, generally in line, nothing that jumps off the page dramatically. From a turn perspective, a good quarter, both absolute and relative, so the long term pool was up fourteen percent versus this benchmark of twelve seven, so well ahead. Still have some ways to make up for that first quarter. A lot of that was driven by the fixed income allocation, which I'll dig into, and active management, you know, really struggled through that sell off and again, maybe not owning some of the the six companies that really drove the markets, but we'll we'll work to chip into that. Digging into the returns, so here on the fixed income side, right? We don't just own the ag, as I mentioned, we have about seventy five basis points more yield that we get from this portfolio. And what we'd argue a very thoughtful way than you can get from owning core fixed income and in this environment, we think that's important, longer term, that will prove beneficial. But in a flight to safety, it's it's going to lag a little bit, which is what we experienced in the first quarter, but so up five and a half for the quarter, well ahead of the ag, you know, still up about four percent year to date, a little bit behind the ag, given that very strong quarter. But you can see good results really across the board from all the managers, Met West up four one, so about a hundred and twenty ahead, BlackRock even north of that, and then Brandywine, which is our kind of global more eclectic credit focused manager, had a very strong return bouncing back as markets really stabilized. Domestic markets up as well, so as I mentioned, Fidelity, that's the S and P five hundred, you can see Dr. Cook, it is twenty one percent of the portfolio, so there's that that large position. Hard to beat it, obviously, with some active management around it. Diamond Hill is our active all cap value manager, you can see a very strong quarter, okay year to date, but you compare value down eighteen percent versus the S and P, I mean, that's where the headwind is, so having that value bias has hurt the portfolio. Again, longer term, we're comfortable with that posture looking forward and that's what we want to hold, so kind of willing to to have a little bit of relative underperformance here in the near term with a with a hope that being thoughtful about it longer term will pay dividends. Then Eaton Vance and Boston Partners, Eaton Vance on the growth side, just giving an example on the growth side. Eaton Vance is a quality focused manager. So they need to see positive earnings even in the small cap place. The top performing companies in small cap actually had never generated an earning before. So that's not a type of company that they would want to invest in, it's some of the vaccine companies, biotech companies, where there's some speculation on how they're going to benefit from this COVID scenario, so. Places that Eaton Vance isn't going to invest, so a tough year for them, given their styles out of favor, but since we've owned them, even with that tough year, still in line with the benchmark and Atlanta Capital. Still a very good manager that we have very high conviction in longer term. And then Boston Partners in the small value side. International markets here, the the relative performance has been better. Really pretty positive across the board for the quarter and year to date. Dodge and Cox is on the value side, MFS on the growth side. And then Schroders on the emerging market side has been well ahead of the emerging market benchmarks as well, so emerging international portfolio continues to do well. And then on the alternative side of the diversifiers, Principal, which is real assets, Cohen and Sears, which is the REIT manager we selected to replace Morgan Stanley, which we were glad we did so, Morgan Stanley's postures have continued to be out of favor and Cohen has got off to a nice start. And then ATOC, which is the hedge fund to fund, you know, did protect capital in that first quarter and had a decent quarter here as well, so. You know, I'd say the two big themes in the portfolio, a bias toward credit hurt for the year, helped for the quarter. And then a slight bias toward value, a notable headwind for the year and really for the last two years, candidly. But a little bit better quarter and actually the manager itself has performed very well in what has been a very difficult asset class, so. Not making any changes in the portfolio to date, except for the reduction of that PIMCO high yield strategy, which we get redeployed to get across BlackRock and MetWest. But happy to to take any questions on any of the managers or the results or any of our rationale for for having the colleges' assets with them. Okay. Moving on to the short term pool. As I mentioned here, this is a lot more conservative in nature. There, you know, it has been a kind of a backdrop to fund near term operations until tuition has come in and that's so it's much more focused on capital preservation, you can see about thirty percent of it's in money markets, seventy percent is in fixed income, but the majority of that is in very short term fixed income. We do have that TIA social choice bond where we pick up the ESG component in this pool. For the quarter up two point one, year to date a positive return, so kind of doing what we'd expected to do in this very weak market environment, that really the headwind is actually coming from the the TIA fund. So you can see year to date up four point three when the ag's up six point one. But similar to the other active management and core fixed income, we're we're kind of comfortable with that, they bounced back having a bias toward non treasury sectors, but on a year to date basis, they're going to, you know, the treasury sectors are still what's winning out. But everything else, you know, has performed quite well. So any questions on the the short term pool, a little bit more simplistic, obviously than the longer term pool, but you know, doing what it's really intended to do. So that that's really it from prepared remarks. You know, Dr. Cook, I don't know if there's any any guidance or any kind of thoughts you can share in terms of kind of where what the college is thinking about or any potential short term needs or how you know, some of the challenges that I'm sure you're going to be dealing with and everyone's dealing with, I'm happy to to offer some thoughts around that, or if there's anything in particular with how the portfolios might support that or get, you know, implicated by that, I'm happy to address as well.
Yeah, let me let me share a little bit of the sort of perspective from our vantage point, so you have that knowledge, but also similarly, I think it'd be helpful back through Mary Kate, that when we meet with trustees, because meetings were added over the summer, Mike, and you can imagine, given the circumstances, the value of that. For them to just know about our portfolio, but also again, some of the sort of macro view, such as you can share around higher education. Use of reserves, position, things like that. Our two drivers, right, this in the year ahead, which still carries such uncertainty is enrollment, and we are now pushing in terms of our credits, ten, twelve percent down year over year. In our forecasting, we've, we're in at about ten percent. And I have some wariness around this idea of gap year students or others sort of staying home, we're not seeing that in our registration data yet. The other driver is state support. About fifty percent of our source of funds, if you will, is our state appropriation. The Department of Hyatt has already given us guidance to call that back four percent. And what I'm wary of, and it's been really hard to forecast, is if Massachusetts has somewhere between four, five or six billion dollar deficit, where they find those savings, because they're not going to, of course, be able to fully deplete rainy day funds, given bond ratings and things that you know, you know, far better than I do. So all roads point to higher education, public higher education, having to endure some type of cut, the question is, when and what amount? And, you know, for a place like us, there's there's millions out there of uncertainty on that on that figure. All that is to say, the college has moved forward a significant package of cut savings, things like that. What we still are trying to figure out is because of some of the especially for us, it's capital projects, we deferred or or frankly canceled some of our capital work. And that went on last year's budget to twenty twenty one, and then that went into reserves. It's the idea that we may need to call upon that version to help us get to balance at some point in this this fiscal year. Now, whether that's one million, whether that's two and a half million, again, that remains to be seen. One of the things that I had to do is certainly be able to demonstrate to trustees, right, that the college ourselves has found savings, has tightened our belts in all those areas they would have expected. So that when we come to them and ask for their support approval, frankly, of that of that motion, they're really clear eyed that this is our sort of last stopgap on that, so. It could be that sizable though, you know, so I would say again, somewhere between a million and maybe three. We've had some examination, some additional forecasting done on this, you know, I'm very wary about the forecast that has between enrollment declines and state support, us pushing more like an eight or ten million dollar deficit this year, I mean, that's 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 pretty strong medicine for us to have to have to take. So that's really the perspective here. I've been sharing that for for some time now with trustees. Been candid with campus dating back to a May all college town hall where I I shared some of the scenarios again that were shown at that time, really the worser case was up to up to five million, but that's that's where we are heading into, again, a very uncertain fall. With still some questions around, even when our our K twelves get off the ground, what does what does COVID look like in between testing and tracing, how do we all navigate that? Obviously, a number of our students by their very nature are parents and will be continuing with a lot, so that's our context, if you will.
Yep. So I guess from a macro perspective, I mean, everyone, I mean, this is not earth shattering, right, higher ed in general is is struggling through this. Everyone for a whole host of reasons, some obviously more than others. You know, we've seen a number of kind of small private schools that we don't work with but know of and interact with, who were already in a very difficult financial position, and this could very well be the kind of final nail in the coffin, as terrible as that is to say, so some that are really struggling. You know, certainly a lot of political pressure, just in terms of folks with endowments, right? A more traditional endowment and can you use that, why do you have to furlough people if you have this endowment and all this money, you know? People not really understanding how an endowment operates, right, and that it's as important to use it for today as it is for fifty years from now. You know, here, right, it's a little bit of a challenge. You know, this long term reserve pool, when we originally set it up, the the kind of the concept buzz behind it was, let's make it look like an endowment. So the state, you know, doesn't come and try to force us to kind of spend that down for a capital project or something, because they know we have it. So here, you know, it's it's not really a true endowment, so it's not protected by like a donor, you know, restriction or a gift, right, so I guess potentially that, you know, that's there and can come under pressure, which I think is a nice thing to have, but something that you might get pressure on, which we can evaluate, so. To the extent we need to think about if the investment strategy on that needs to change at all in the short term or long term, we can certainly do that. You know, we've seen a whole host of things in terms of what people are doing in terms of how they're approaching fall semester. We work with Morehouse College down in Atlanta and they're doing everything remotely. I was on the phone with Saint Joe's in West Hartford this morning and they are very adamant about having students back on campus and if everyone follows the rules, then this shouldn't be really that more challenging than some of the other things we need to deal with from a health perspective on campus, particularly because they're very focused on nursing and labs and things of that nature, so very different ends of the spectrum on how they're kind of going about it and approaching it. But I think everyone is extremely nervous with the amount of uncertainty, they're trying to do budgets, but it's hard to budget what you don't know and stay true to it, so they're kind of have that out there, but knowing that it could look very different and trying not to focus too much on it. We've definitely seen clients use a special appropriation from their endowment or a long term pool of capital, board designated pool of capital to as a backstop to get through these times or set it aside, just knowing that it's there if they need it. We've helped clients think through, you know, here again, because we don't really spend a percentage from that, right, it's more of a if you have a capital project or a need that comes from the long term fund, we'll take it, but it's not. So we've helped clients evaluate, if you take an additional ten million out this year as a one time special appropriation, what does that mean in terms of spending for the next twenty years, because that's going to get reduced and the impacts of that and portfolio growth and whatnot, but that's not going to apply a whole lot here, so. You know, I guess that was maybe not as overly pointed, but just some of the things that we're seeing out there and I think everyone obviously struggling with the same things. You know, but for this situation, we're happy to kind of roll our sleeves up and help you dig into it, and particularly with that long term pool, if it's something that we there is a real possibility of having to take a notable draw from that. Is that something we want to start to talk about now and set aside now? As more of a safety net, right, than keeping it invested more long term. And then really needing to lean on it and then being in another challenged market environment, it's not as impactful or beneficial as it could be. So definitely, people are going through trade offs of we want to invest this money for the long term, but we're willing to take some of the chips off the table and recognize we may miss some upside, but knowing that we've kind of improved that safety net if necessary.
A couple of things, and I guess there's one ask in there, Mike, so. Even as we talk and consider now and try to look through the looking glass, we won't know until ad drop, which for us is mid September, where enrollment lands. And the way it looks like, and it's hard to read the tea leaves with budgeting, is that Massachusetts may do a three month budget. But they will essentially do the version of the one twelfth for higher education, so we won't have clarity and that may be extended all the way into October. So in terms of state support, it's well into fall. And again, just wanted you to see the sort of landscape on on again, these two drivers. It may mean, you know, you're talking differently with with John Tudor and about you know, especially come end of September, October, how are things looking, where are we? I have less concern about things like cash flow, and again, more it's the long term. Because even the position we have, if you will, on spring semester is a enrollment decline of six percent. That may seem incredibly optimistic right now, right, so it's things like that, probably in the in the second half of the fiscal year. All that is to be said, we we have a fair share of new trustees, Mike, who are not necessarily familiar with this helpful, albeit a lot of attention focused on our reserves right now, so even the idea of you partnering with John to generate even like a memo that just reiterates how the portfolio was set up, intentionality, you know, and even uses in the past that they are and have only ever been used for one time expenses that really were capital in nature. Not operational, as they have sort of garnered some attention. And at the end of the day, I think we know if the college, let's say, had to shutter tomorrow, what the outlay is, I want to say it's maybe in the tune, John, of five or six million, something like that, so you can just pull that off the top. What I've really had my work cut out, Mike, to sort of share with people is we're really one facilities emergency away from having to lean on that, that's an apple to the orange of the conversation we're having right now around last resort to help us get a balanced budget because the state can't, right? But I think you also know, and I want to do better about joining the idea of what's our deferred maintenance need, it's that three hundred and fifteen billion, or sorry, sorry, three hundred and fifteen million on the campus, right? This is our insurance policy is, I think, in some ways how things have been set up. When we look through. The guidelines, the investment strategies, this is our insurance policy. Because we know the Commonwealth just does not have the ability to sort of. Bail a stick out for a multimillion dollar facilities emergency going down, down the road.
Yeah, I mean, we're obviously happy to help and work with John to draft up whatever makes sense. Even I'm happy to call in to a trustee's call or anything that I think wants to talk through it. To walk through strategy, how it's set up in the past, how we've thought about it, et cetera. You know, things we can do as a result, if necessary, just to give everyone some context around it and clarity. I'm happy to do that as well.
It's, it's, I mean, it's early days, but our next Ways and Means meeting is Monday, the 20th, Mike. Starts at five, even if you just pencil that right now, I see our our board chair sort of taking note of that. It may be worthwhile for that committee to have a sort of broader view. Of this what reserves and what it is and what it's been. And have a chance to ask you some questions around. Positioning strategy and even what you've shared about higher education, that may be very, very valuable. So if we can. Again, we can talk offline about it, but I just wanted you to have the next date and time of it.
Okay.
Excuse me, Dr. Cook. Um, the next Ways and Means is the 20th, August 20, 17, sorry.
Sorry, yeah, that, yes, that Monday, the 17th. Yes, thank you, Nanette. Yep.
You're welcome.
Any others? You know what we have, Mike? Tony, John, Dorothy?
No, nothing here. Just to give another perspective on the portfolio, I know throughout the year. It was discussed a little bit more through the Ways and Means meetings. But just to give some perspective, from a fiscal year standpoint, our portfolio as of the end of March. Was was down 1.2%. I mean, that wasn't a realized loss, but that's just the way that it was tracking at that point in time. I think as everybody knows, we've been chipping away at that as Mike has just kind of walked us through the last quarter. And now we're reporting that we're actually up $200,000, you know, through from fiscal year viewpoint. So it was. It was some, some nerve, nerving times or unnerving times perhaps, but it came out nicely. So again, well done with. With Mike, you and your team bringing things back.
Mary Kate, just wanted to check in with you if you have any questions or any other sort of next steps.
No, I think you already mentioned it, Dr. Cook, and I think it, you know, Mike, with your help and and working with Jonathan for. As Dr. Cook said, we do have new people coming on the board is is to really, you know, understand. What's coming without having the full picture. And I think you're right, you know, I'm knocking on some wood that IASIS didn't have any adverse impact. In downtown Springfield, that though I know our communities and some of our surrounding colleagues have taken a hit. So. I think that's right. We are from a fiscal and a capital perspective, a little bit behind the eight wall. With what we have to do from a facility perspective. So really want to understand. The best way making these hard decisions from a short term. To a long term. And I know that we're going through things right now. We want to keep an overall view. Not just one that is, you know, something that's in the in the. Front view mirror about what's going to be coming down the road. So Mike, really appreciate your time. Walking us through this and it would expect you and Jonathan to really kind of dig in. To give us some additional ideas of how best to position the college. For our students, faculty, staff in the future and just appreciate you. Thank you.
I think, I think that's us, Mike. I think, I think that's where we land then.
Well, I will circle up with John directly and we'll dig in the weeds a little bit and think through what makes sense for that Ways and Means Committee, but certainly happy to do that. That's what we're here for and. We'll go from there.
That's great. And then Jonathan, I'd ask you just to loop in Mac. Once after you've talked to Mike and to make sure he's. In the know, has all the information. So as we present that, we're in good shape and on the same page. I appreciate it too, Jonathan. Great.
Okay, and Madam Chair, I think we just need you.
I think I got to call the, I have to call the meeting. So I am calling the meeting of. The Investment Committee for August 6th, and thank you so much, Mike. Really appreciate you again.
Sure thing. We'll see everyone soon. Have a good afternoon.
All right, you too.
Thank you.